Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is August 28, 2017. We're holding the meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. The order of our meeting will include an audit update, a financial update, public participation, and then we will move to adjourn. As always, I would remind everyone that courteous and thoughtful behavior is more appreciated than expected. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Thursday, August 24, 2017, at least 48 hours before this meeting at boardroom principal office, 42 West Madison Street lobby, and on cpsboe.org. Thank you.
The Finance and Audit Committee meeting is hereby called at, uh, called to order. Madam Secretary, please read the roll, take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. A member, Furlong.
Present.
Member Rivera.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
And President Clark.
Present.
Four members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our CEO, Forrest Claypool, and our general counsel, Ronald Marmar. Thank you.
Okay. We'll begin with the audit and finance presentations. Andrel Holloway and Ron Denard will begin. I'm not sure which of you gentlemen are going first.
Andrel will be going first, Mr. President.
Good morning, board members. My name is Andrel Holloway. I'm the chief internal auditor here at Chicago Public Schools, and I'd like to provide you with a brief update from an audit perspective. Given that this is the first quarter meeting for FY '18, what I'd like to do is provide a summary of the accomplishments that we've made here at CPS relative to internal audit in FY '17. I think it's important to remind the board and the public about the role of internal audit and why are we here in the first place? What is our role here at CPS? The first thing to mention is we're here to evaluate the effectiveness of internal controls, assess compliance with board policies, drive risk mitigation activities, as well as identify business process improvement, efficiency opportunities ways that we can do things better with less risk and also less cost. In terms of qualitative accomplishments from FY '17, I think one thing to mention is it's the first year since 2011 that we completed a risk-based internal audit plan. That started with a broad-based internal audit, or excuse me, enterprise risk assessment, where we looked at risk across the organization, tried to understand what those risks were at that point in time, and prioritize those, and designed an audit program that adapted to that risk profile, as well as making sure that we had conversations with you, the board, as well as management, who are ultimately responsible for monitoring and managing that risk. The other thing that we did this year is we expanded our school audit profile. If you look at the audit volume that we did from school audits last year, we had a reduction from 16 over to 17, but that's primarily because we substantially increased the scope of audits out at schools. We went through a consolidation process here at central office, brought in the compliance functions into the audit department, and as a result of that, we again expanded to include grant audits and a number of other things in school audits. I feel that we have a more holistic, more broad-based view of school audits at this point now with the school audit footprint that's in place. The other thing that we did are, were several central office audits. Those include a procurement audit, payroll audit, cybersecurity audit, which you'll hear more about today, option schools, and supplemental payment systems, just to highlight a few of the other non-school-based but central office-focused audits that we have completed. The other thing I want to highlight, and we'll get to this in just a bit, is a focus on data analytics, which I think really improves our audit capacity. And again, you'll hear a little bit more about that in just a moment. In terms of talking about quantitative accomplishments for FY '17, I think one of the key accomplishments coming out of our audit footprint was the option schools attendance audit, which identified a substantial gap between reported attendance by our option school operators versus what we were able to quantify by doing our audits over the course of last year. We did several visits over the course of roughly a year to make sure that the numbers that we were coming back with were accurate. The result of that will lead the board to being able to realize as much as $12 million in savings annually if we were to adjust the way that we compensate option schools based on attendance versus actual enrollment, which has been past practice. A couple other things to identify or to highlight, and I think there's an important distinction here, the $12 million that I identified just a moment ago is real cost savings. The $6 million and a half a million that I'll talk about in just a moment relate to how we are able to quantify the impact of findings relative to audit work. So when you look at school audit findings, if you were to add up the dollar impact of all the school audit findings from FY '18, there would be a $6 million impact. And what that means, for example, when we quantify the findings related to fixed assets, those findings added up to $3.7 million. And I want to be careful to clarify, or I want to be able to clarify, that that does not mean that we are missing $3.7 million in fixed assets. What that means is that we were not able to quantify or find $3.7 million in assets, and that could happen for a number of reasons. The asset could have been transferred from one individual to another, and that transfer did not make it into our fixed asset system. It could have been an asset that was disposed of, and we did not go through the appropriate disposal process from an accounting perspective, or it could be indeed missing. But I want to be careful to say that all we're saying here is that when we add up the findings related to fixed assets, it totals $3.7 million. The same with payroll. When you look at the payroll number that we have there, what we're saying is that there's, excuse me, dollars where we see employees paid, but because of the absence of clear documentation in terms of the work performed, it calls into question those payments. But again, those employees may have indeed worked those hours. The other thing to highlight, the last thing on this page, is the half a million dollars related to accountability audits. And so, a big focus of my team also is to look at accountability and look at employee misconduct issues, internal control gaps that we've seen, and a lot of that has related to time and attendance abuses, where an employee is having another employee swipe in for him or her. And there's been a number of outcomes as a result of that, primarily discipline, including a number of terminations. But again, the finding impact from what we're able to quantify, conservatively speaking, is a half a million dollars.
Andrel, before you move on, this page shows $18.5 million in potential savings, particularly the first one where there's a potential savings of $12 million if you actually base funding that actually follows attendance as opposed to the initial enrollment numbers. Is this a recommendation that you obviously made to management?
Yes, it is.
And do you anticipate the $12 million would be a realized savings in the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes, I do. And in fact, in the last quarterly payment for FY '17, $2 million was realized by taking immediate action relative to those payments, meaning instead of those last payments being based on enrollment, we did make an adjustment, the organization made an adjustment based on attendance, and pulled back $2 million immediately, again, with the last fourth-quarter payment. So those actions are underway. I do expect that the board will realize savings there.
Does this $18.5 million turn internal audit into a profit center?
Effectively, yes. I mean, when you look at our budget, the $12 million by far outpaces the cost of the audit department. Again, going back to the prior slide, there are a number of ways that I feel that we value ourselves from a success metric perspective. Certainly finding opportunities to save dollars here at CPS is one of them. But again, first and foremost, we're looking at the internal control structure and different things like that. But if you look at the $12 million, I would say that that's probably two and a half times what my department costs to operate.
That sounds like a profit center. Thank you.
So moving on to other items to highlight for the board, I thought it was important to remind the board of key open findings. These are things that have been presented to the board in the past, to which some action has been made, but we have not fully remediated these issues. But one thing that I think we've made significant progress on relates to the cyber diagnostic, cybersecurity diagnostic assessment, and our chief information officer is here to talk about the progress that has been made relative to that infrastructure. So I won't talk about that much here. I'll defer that conversation and have you have the opportunity to ask field questions as well. The other thing that I wanted to highlight is when it comes to a vendor payments and employee reimbursement audit, we feel that there is still opportunity for improvement there. Some things, just to remind the board, that we saw in the past relative to this, where a lot of real vendor issues, if you look at vendor data issues, if you were to look at it from that perspective, for example, we saw a number of vendors that appeared to have the same address or the same telephone number. Some of this could be that numbers have changed, addresses have changed, and we have not cleaned up our vendor master file. The importance of having a clean vendor master file is we have vendor limits, and if these vendors are able to exist in our procurement system more than once, then they are able to perhaps exceed those vendor limits. So that's, at the end of the day, the importance of the findings from that particular audit. The other item to highlight are, it relates to internal accounts. Internal accounts is a $150 to $200 million annual ecosystem for the schools. It's money that comes into the schools from a number of perspectives, but primarily collected from parents for academic fees, sporting fees, and different things like that, athletic fees. What we've been able to do over the last couple of years that I've been here is continue to increase the transparency around the dollars that come into those, into the internal accounts ecosystem. But I think more work is certainly necessary, and more work, or excuse me, some of that work is underway right now. A big part of that is updating the internal accounts manual. Again, that's work that's underway. I've been working, my team's been working with the finance group, with the school support center group to make those changes. But again, that work is still underway. The final thing there is just making sure that we also continue to streamline our chart of accounts ecosystem, or our chart of accounts structure relative to the internal accounts ecosystem, if you will, just to make sure that we continue to provide better clarity around the dollars that are out there in internal accounts. And again, a lot of success has been made relative to this. All that I'm saying here is that there's more work to be done in the option school audits we talked about just a moment ago.
One more question, Andrel. As you went through your list of items that you're looking at, where you detect issues that look not just like problems with internal controls, but out-and-out fraud, I assume in the latter, you immediately contact the IG's office?
Yes, we talk with the IG's office. We have a standard bi-weekly call where we talk about things that we've identified, and we will reach out to him immediately if we see something that's there. Of course, we will converse with him. Moving over to data analytics, and one of the last two key things that I want to highlight for the board, I think this is a significant movement in terms of our audit capacity. What this allows us to do is to take large samples of transactions. In fact, 100% populations or full populations of transactions, and audit them in real time. These are things that we can do every hour, every day, every week, every month, for every school that's in the system. And the significance of that is when you think about our school audit footprint, it may take us three to five years to audit every school, depending on the number of audits that we do annually. What this allows us to do is to look, reach into schools, and look at a number of transactions, a number of processes, again, with full sample, full population testing, and see what types of issues may or may not exist. We have programs in place where we work with some of the departments that are represented here, the school support center, procurement, student support, and engagement. And when we do see data that raises alarms, or data that is indicative of some problem or aberration, we reach out to these departments and pass this information along to them for them to take action. To give you an example of some of the things that we look for, when you look at internal accounting, we're looking for things such as are deposits being made in a timely manner, the number of outstanding deposits, the number of manual journal entries. These things could be, excuse me, indicative of problems or issues that may persist related to, exist related to cash. We're also looking for examples where vendors have exceeded the bidable or non-bidable vendor limits. Again, we can identify those across every school in real time. We're looking for split payments where we may have a $10,000 limit for a check, for example. There's a check that's greater than $10,000, they're splitting that check up over multiple payments, so we're looking for different things like that. We're also looking for attendance changes and grade changes with high number, in high volumes, or where you have a grade change, for example, where the grade changes by, you know, two points, for example, goes from a C to an A, something such as that. I think this is a, again, big achievement for the team. What it allows us to do is to either pull back scope for school audits that are actually happening, or we could replace the work that we're doing relative to schools for these procedures with other procedures, and again, have a more comprehensive audit footprint. And finally, what I want to highlight for the board are tentative FY '18 audits, and you'll see a list of those audits here, a financial controls audit. What this relates to is just looking at key controls that are happening around financial processes to make sure that those processes are being executed well, effectively, timely. Hiring practices audit, looking at different hiring policies, procedures, and quite honestly, just making sure that we're in compliance with those policies. Looking at the sole and single source audit committee, something that was looked at a couple of years ago, just taking another look to make sure that that committee continues to operate effectively and meet its mandate. And the final thing is to look at, for example, student records management from a practices perspective, not saying that we have indications that these, that there is an issue related to student records, but just making sure, again, that we have good controls, good oversight over our student records to make sure that we protect that information and protect that data. So unless the board has any questions for me, I will turn it over to Ron Denard.
I have two quick questions, Andrel. One, what's the process of communicating these findings to schools? And two, you know, what's the district doing to make sure that, you know, schools are well-versed or properly trained in best practices along these issues?
Sure, sure. So the first way that we start that communication process with the schools is we have an exit interview. So as we're on the ground, we start talking with the principals, start talking with the appropriate individuals at the school about what we've seen in terms of issues. That's followed up by a formal internal audit report whereby management has to issue what's called a management action plan for any audit findings that are present in that report. That report makes it very clear not only what the issue relates to that we've identified, but what the expected condition should be, or what that criteria should be. So if you're measured against something, we'll let you know what you're measured against and what that deficit is, what needs to be remediated. Beyond that, we will have a audit follow-up process. We don't look at every school audit to make sure that they've taken the actions that have been outlined in that management action plan. We look at it really from a prioritization perspective, looking at those higher-risk findings, those schools that have a needs improvement unsatisfactory rating first. And then the final thing is we do work with different departments. So, for example, right now, we're having conversations with grants management. We're letting them know about the issues that we've seen, the trends that we've seen at schools, so that when they go out there and provide technical advice, training the schools, they will have a better idea of what they need to talk to schools about. We do that with other departments as well.
Two quick questions. One is, how do you select the schools to be audited?
So, we use a risk-based criteria to identify which schools should be audited. It includes a number of factors, the time since the last audit, past audit issues, the number of transactions that may be going through the school, the size of the school, a number of different things that will increase your risk profile, and based on the results of that, we select our audit population.
Okay, and the other question is just kind of a thought question. If you had additional resources, what would be the most important thing that you would add to the audit list?
That's a, that's a good question. You know, I honestly believe that we've continued to expand the school audit footprint. I think that we have pretty good coverage there. I think that from a compliance perspective, I would invest those resources more into central office departmental audits or other compliance areas here at the organization. We have significant compliance requirements here at Chicago Public Schools, so I would probably invest time there. Not saying that we're not investing time now, we're looking at grants, we're looking at Title I, we're looking at Title II, we're looking at a number of different grant sources, we're looking at Title IX compliance from a sports perspective. I know nutrition has their own capacity to look at compliance requirements there, but with the breadth of compliance requirements here, I think that that's where I'd invest time. In fact, if you go back to my comment about the enterprise risk assessment, we felt that compliance was so significant here at CPS, we pulled it out of the traditional risk assessment, and we did a separate compliance risk assessment just because of the robustness of which, of how we need to look at that potentially. So I would probably invest in more in central office and compliance activities.
Thank you, Andrel. Very kind to you.
Thank you very much, Andrel. Mr. Denard.
Good morning, Board of Directors, Ron Denard, SVB of Finance. So 2017 was a very challenging year. We had ups and downs. I'm going to talk about one of our ups. We had, we issued what I would call our capital improvement bonds, which we were able, which was especially structured bonds. We talked to our investors, we worked closely with bond councils, and we were able to get a five-notch upgrade. So these bonds were investment-grade. So as compared to the bonds that we issued in February of 2016, which had an eight and a half yield, these bonds had a 6.25 yield, and that's roughly a present value savings of $200 million. That's $200 million, Andrel Holloway. So the, we are very proud of that, proud of that moment. Then some of what I would call our 20-
Were you trumping, Andrel?
We, we have our little rivalry, rivalry here, here and there, but we work very closely together. Some of the more challenging moments was that, as you were aware, the governor vetoed $215 million out of our budget, so we had to work very closely with our schools, and we were able to cut at least $104 million out of the budget. And while that was going on, the state didn't pay us $467 million of block grants. So we worked, we worked diligently in the Treasury Department, especially with our CFO, and we issued a new instrument. It was called grant anticipation notes. So we had to borrow that, the money for those block grants, so that we would be able to pay our teachers, our, you know, our vendors, and we made our pension payment, given, again, $215 million was cut out of our budget, and then another $467 million payments were being delayed. And we still was able to end the year with everyone got paid on time, and we made our pension payment.
Ron, both the media and others, the union leaders, well-recognized organizations, from time to time, really criticize the amount of borrowing that takes place at CPS that the board has approved, and which, while I don't like the level of borrowing, nor does anyone sitting up here, nor do you, I've not, I've not seen options more viable than the steps we've taken. Take a minute and explain when these issues took place, when the state delayed payment of the $467 million, when the governor abruptly vetoed, they took out the $215 million, and that's just simply, the money just doesn't come, even though it was expected and owed. We get a lot of guidance on what we should have done, but in the short-term window of weeks or months, what all of these expenses do, what really are the realistic options open to us if we are in fact going to keep our doors open?
So, so given that that all happened from roughly January to June, we really don't have that many options. When you take $215 million out of our budget, that, that is a significant hit. Our payroll is our largest expense, and that's, and that's, and it should be. That's, we pay our teachers to teach our kids, and we have to make sure that we make our payroll on time, and also make our pension payment. Not paying us what, and this wasn't extra money that we asked for the state, this is what the state had appropriated for us, they just didn't, just didn't pay us. So that is, puts us in a very precarious situation, but we were able to work our way out of it, and sometimes we do have to borrow, and, and that's the option that we had, given the short amount of time that we had to react. Sometimes I hear about our short-term line of credit, which is $1.55 billion. However, our property taxes are paid in March and August. Again, our largest expenses are paid every two weeks and every month. So there are, so you, so there are times where we have to borrow that money in advance because we can't wait for the money to come in order for us to meet our expenses.
Thank you.
So going to some, some more of our accomplishments in the corporate accounting department. For 2016, we had a clean, unmodified audit. I was very proud of that for the team. We also, our old auditors, we had for probably 10 to 11 years, we actually did a RFP, and we ended up selecting a new auditor, Baker Tilly. Something else that the finance, the finance and accounting department has been working on, we have been heavily recruiting new talent. We've got, when I got here, there weren't any CPAs in the accounting department. We now have CPAs, MBAs, masters of accounting, and even professional project managers. Now, that's very difficult in an environment where you're, the news media is always talking about the financial negatives of your organization to be able to recruit finance professionals, but we're very aggressive about it, and we're very proud of it. In addition, we get awards for our comprehensive financial report, our CAFR, and we get that from the GFPA, that's the Governor Finance Officers Association.
Hey, Ron. You know, it's almost a sport at both the national and local levels to go after the news media, but I'm always reminded that they actually, and I'm sure some of them are here, but they actually have a job to do too, and that's to report the news at our financial plight, and in fact, it's really news, so that's their job to do it. We'd like them to do it our way, but that's not really how free media works. People kind of, they do it their way, or they do it the way they believe is serving the public interest. We don't have to agree with that. I didn't, I'm not suggesting that you were being negative to the press. I'm sure you embrace and love them, but I thought I would add that.
Right, and I was just talking about, right, our financial environment that is definitely out there. It's a difficult recruiting environment. Our budget department did an excellent job this year. They, as a part of our 2017 budget, we had $300 million of savings projects, and the budget department had to manage those projects, and we were able to deliver the majority of them. They also had to help us line up how we were going to address the $544 million in our 2018 budget, and that's one of the major accomplishments for the budget department. Again, the Treasury Department has done a great job- Again, the Treasury Department has done a great job. They secured the $1.55 billion short-term credit line that I spoke of earlier and have secured it for 2018, and was able to solicit and recruit two more banks, so now we'll have four banks instead of two banks, which always helps out in financial situations. In addition, we issued $500 million of bonds, which helped us reimburse this in the operating fund and a small amount of new money also, and that was a successful bond deal. Again, that was less than the 2016 bond, and it was actually oversubscribed by One Times. So in our Department of Business and Diversity, we had done a study, economic study, and it determined that our targets of 30% and 7% are still the appropriate targets. And last year, we did have a big vendor fair, and we were able to bring in more diversity On payroll services, payroll services has helped implement Kronos, which is a self-service, and that is a system that private sector, public sector uses where you can now go in on a self-service, you can do it yourself, you can change your, if you have a time issue or change your personal information, your bank accounts, you can now do it yourself. And with SSC, I think Andrel spoke about it briefly, SSC, we were able to pull out all of the, what I would call mundane administrative tasks that were out in the schools, book transfers, budget transfers, expense reimbursements, and that helps us create sort of better internal controls around that. And I feel the principals were actually very happy about it, with most of them.
That concludes your comments, Ron.
Yes.
Questions, board members? You've had the opportunity to brief, I believe, each board member one-on-one, and I know there were some follow-up briefings, so it sounds like all the questions, outstanding questions that were asked have been answered.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ron.
And so we'll bring up Phil Di Bartolo, our Chief Information Officer.
Phil?
Good morning. I'm here to speak briefly as a follow-up to the information security audit that Andrel alluded to earlier. We went through in late May of this year. I'm very happy to report that we've made some fairly significant progress, mostly in light of the fact that we already had a number of these items in flight at the time the audit was conducted. In very broad terms, I'm not going to necessarily speak through each of the individual bullet points, but just tell you that the domains that we focus on, we're upgrading our core technology, putting forth a substantial effort to train our users, which is, in very many respects, a very critical element of information security, making sure people know how to do the right thing. And then finally, we've been working in the area to kind of hone up our staffing, to make sure we have the right resources in-house to manage this program moving forward. So what I decided I would do was kind of time-box the slides based on what we've done since the audit results were presented to this committee. The first big information security item that we had to deal with right after that audit was a very well-publicized ransomware outbreak. Thankfully, we had all of our machines patched and we, you know, didn't have an issue with that particular bug, so we're very proud of that. Perhaps the biggest change that we made on the core technology stack is that we implemented a cloud access security broker. So to take the tech speak out of it, what we did was kind of put a layer between our Google Drive and the Internet. You may or may not know this, but one of the largest users of Google Drive in the world, we have between 40 to 50 million documents on Google Drive. So what this broker allows us to do is to establish rules, and we've established three rules to begin with. One that safeguards for FERPA information, another one that safeguards IEP documents, and the third, it looks for any document with personally identifiable information. So the first step was to install the application. After we installed it, we did a scan of all of our documents, and what the system basically does for our end-users is it detected any document that had very wide public sharing against those three rule sets, and it stripped those sharing, the very public sharing permissions out of those documents and sent an email to the document owners, letting them know, hey, there's potentially sensitive information in here. We've kind of peeled back the public view and just restricted it to anyone within CPS. This was a very big implementation for us, and it allowed us to remove a very temporary and draconian measure of banning external sharing that we had in place for a few weeks while we got this done. Next, on the staffing side, we decided to post for Director of Information Security, and so I don't have to touch on it in subsequent months on the slides. I'll tell you that we've gone through. I interviewed the last of our three finalists today, and I expect to have an offer out to the candidate of choice by the end of the week. This person's charge is going to be to make sure that there's continued vigilance on this program day-to-day, with a keen eye towards what we might need to do to modify our acceptable usage policy moving forward. Again, now that we've kind of built out some of the technical underpinnings to allow us to do a little bit more, it inherently begets the need to look at our policy to see if we need to make that somewhat more robust, particularly in the areas of how we use social media in schools and the classroom, and what level of autonomy we want to give schools to kind of control their own Internet content filters. So you'll probably hear a little bit more about that in the coming months. As well, in June, the team worked a great deal to create an information security training program and a post-training exam for anyone who takes it. As we moved into the month of July, I can tell you that we trained 986 attendees at our legal conference, that's mostly APs and principals, on really best practices in the area of information security. It's around kind of FERPA standards and really document sharing, also kind of giving them a roadmap for where we wanted to go moving forward. Now, we're very excited about the training because we're about to turn the focus to all of the administrative offices. So we'll be hitting, you know, Garfield Park, the Bridgeport Office, obviously here at Madison to make sure every member of our administration understands, you know, the kind of the table stakes when it comes to information security. The next step after that is to then kind of face the schools, and what we're going to do is partner with the talent office to make sure that this information, this information security training is part of onboarding for every new hire in the organization. The intent is to make sure every new hire goes through the post-training exam, and then for those folks who have heightened access to very sensitive systems, we plan on having them recertify per annum. After we move through central office in the fall, I would expect it will start to do some of the more school-facing training for, you know, teachers and staff a little bit later on in the year. Okay, I'm going to move forward. This August, we've had a number of items in play. The most important, we have very recently implemented two-factor authentication and a new virtual private network client. So basically what this means, and I'm assuming most of you may have already had these questions come up, we now ask challenge questions in addition to a simple login and password. So it could be, you could choose from any variety of questions. We rolled this out in the last six weeks, so now when you're trying to access systems remotely or even in the building, you will get a challenge question or two. And again, this two-factor is very important in that it allowed us to lay the groundwork to put HR self-service back on the virtual private network. We took it off because we felt it was an exposure to have, you know, personally identifiable information in a system that wasn't behind two-factor authentication. But now that we've gotten that done, we've made HR for you available to all CPS staff again. I can tell you that the check mark is actually erroneous here because we have an in-flight effort right now to evaluate weaknesses in our network by conducting penetration testing. What penetration testing basically does is we have an external firm who's working with Andrel Holloway's group, and they are basically trying to probe our network to see if we have any vulnerable IP addresses. That work is ongoing and should be wrapped before the start of school. Obviously, we don't want to be performing that type of penetration testing while we have folks on the network and, you know, getting students registered and enrolled. I expect at some point in the near future, I'll come back to provide the results of that penetration testing. Finally, as I alluded to earlier, all of the changes that we're making, both with respect to, you know, the underlying core technology and our training, we are going to come back to this group at some point to talk about an amended acceptable use policy. So what we're doing over the next week is trying to bring together a group of central office departments and school representatives to talk through some of the things we can do now that might come to bear on updates to our acceptable use policy. I would expect that once we get that group together, it would probably be four to six weeks before we'd be ready to kind of, you know, put it into the pipeline for a potential board review, obviously assuming that CEO Claypool and the CEO's office is comfortable with our proposal. And that is kind of the high level of where we've been on information security relative to the findings that were in the internal audit report. I believe this kind of really takes care of some of the very serious gaps that were recognized, and we feel we're positioned for success moving forward. As well, Mr. Denard thought it might be worthwhile to talk about some of the IT major initiatives from last year, given that kind of roll into the finance arm, and what I decided to do is just kind of break that down into different categories. Our major initiatives that were community-based, as I'm sure you all know, we've been supporting the Go CPS work, which involves a brand-new website and online enrollment for all of our eighth graders for high school. As well, we also implemented a water quality application and reporting on our website. In the classroom, this is a pretty big achievement as part of our federal E-Rate program. We were able to upgrade to 100-megabit Internet standard for all elementary schools and 1-gigabit bandwidth for every high school. This meets the U.S. Department of Education's recommended standard. As well, some of the classroom work that we did last year was focused on ensuring that all of our machines would be able to support the wide variety of online assessments that our students take. In many cases, whether it's park or any other type of assessment, they typically kind of changed some of the underlying machine requirements to make sure that those assessments can be taken smoothly. It was a fair amount of work that I would consider not cyclical operation, but additional project work last year because some of the assessments that we brought in-house had additional machine requirements. Thankfully, we really didn't take too many calls on that, so I think it was a fairly smooth implementation.
Phil, before you go on-
Yes, sir.
-the 100-megabyte and the 1-gigabyte upgrade, meeting those standards, what does that actually mean for the students in the classroom?
That's, it's a great question. It actually goes hand-in-hand with the piece that I'm talking about now, online assessments. We've seen an extreme proliferation in the use of technology in the classroom, and what that equals is the need for more bandwidth. So this is kind of the core connection out to the Internet. There's some additional things that we'll be doing over the next couple of years as part of the federal E-Rate program to make sure that we can maximize that higher-speed connectivity. But essentially, what that means is we've gone high-speed fiber and we've taken all the old T1 networking out. So again, we're hoping that it allows for the growth of one-to-one computing, personalized learning applications, and of course, the online assessments where we see a pretty good hit on our network when we have thousands of kids doing that at one time.
Yes, that answers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move down to efficiency. We had a pretty big hand to play in the SSC implementation relative to upgrading Kronos. We implemented some demand management workflow software for a number of CPS business units, including the Office of Diverse Learners, Talent, and the SSC. Basically, we're kind of using one-demand management software for people to call in and log tickets to make sure that we can pass those cleanly between different groups, whereas in previous years, it was kind of a siloed approach where every group that had a public-facing phone bank kind of tracked things a little bit differently. So we're very excited about this because this should allow us to do some more robust reporting relative to demand that's coming into the building. And then, of course, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of efficiency, we have retired our old T1 Sonnet Ring network. Again, that's kind of the older technology that was a little bit slower. We had it around for an overlap period as we were doing the high-speed fiber as a redundancy measure, but now that we're very confident where we're at with the fiber, we've decided to retire that technology. In terms of staff development, you may have seen there was an article in The Times several months ago about our Google Palooza event. We had another successful event this year. We had about 1,000 school-based staff come for a variety of different professional development courses on how to use Google or what types of technology you could potentially purchase for the classroom this year. In addition to that, we hosted all of the technology coordinators in the district, that's roughly 133 schools, to come in and learn some best practices in terms of taking care of local machines and network. And we're very excited about a pilot of a Google certification program that we've undertaken over the last 12 weeks, where we have folks from central office going to Google for Level 1 and Level 2 certification training. Now that the proof of concept is done, kind of getting my ducks in a row and plan to present a plan to the CEO's office about maybe expanding this program out to other departments and certainly to schools. That concludes my content.
Questions?
Yeah, Phil, good morning. I have a question for you. How easy is it if I was an administrator in one of the schools to gain access to student name and address information and do solicitations like an instance we went through this year? And is it either prevention or detection controls that you have in place?
So inherently, principals have access to the students in their school. So if their student is enrolled at their school, they'll have access to that type of information. Systemically, they shouldn't be able to pull that information up on other students. I can tell you that one of the bullet items on the previous slide that speaks to this that I kind of glossed over, it gets a little bit technical. If you look at the third bullet under June, we began cut over to a new identity management system. What an identity management system will do for us is will allow us to dispense with a largely manual process of giving people permissions to different system sets. What we see in an organization of, you know, well over 20,000 people is that there's a fair amount of movement, you know, between teachers, principals, even central office staff going from one department to another or one school to another. It's always been a challenge for us to be able to make sure that the commensurate view of a student or view of a school travels as that person changes roles. This is the underlying technology that's going to be able to allow us to do that with a higher degree of precision. So right now, that work is in flight, and what we really rely on now is a series of manual audits and really partnership with Andrel's group to make sure that we're as buttoned up as we can be. Does that answer your question, sir?
Pretty close. When will that cut over be complete that you'll be confident that you can restrict access the way you'd like to restrict access?
Before the end of the calendar year.
Oh, okay.
But I'll state that we do feel that we have a reasonable process in place now. It's just that it is manually intensive, and we'd really like to get to working smarter so we can apply those resources to some more school-facing technologies. If that makes sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question. You talked about, you know, everything that we're doing on the staff side, the safeguard sensitive information. What are we doing on the vendor side for those organizations that have access to sensitive information?
That's a great question. So what I have a couple of folks in my area working on in conjunction with a couple of partners in the law department is making sure that any time we send, and this is also partnering with procurement, don't want to leave them out, we need to be sure that every time we send a solicitation out the door that involves a technology product, that we are, one, making sure we're adhering to the standard boilerplate relative to how the technology would interoperate with, you know, the tools that we already have in-house, but more importantly, there needs to be a data sharing, a consistent data sharing component for every technology agreement that we undergo. I can tell you that we've got boilerplates in place now, but what we're working to do is kind of tweak those a little bit based on what we see coming down the road in terms of upcoming technology implementations. But the bottom line is, I think we absolutely have to apply the highest degree of vigor upon solicitation so folks know that, look, you know, the price of admission is that you're going to have to be sure that you match our technology. We're not going to jump through hoops for you because that drives increased costs. But more importantly, relative to the sanctity of our students' data, our staff's data, that they understand that they're skin in the game and including penalties for any breach.
Frank, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Until I heard Ernie's question, I don't think I could have worded it this way. Do we have a standard, Andrel or Phil, that if there's unauthorized access that you have reporting to this board? Do you know, do we, I guess, and if we don't, then go ahead.
I would defer to Andrel to answer the question. I don't have a formal process in IT for board notification. Typically, if we detected something, I would, Andrel would probably be my first call, just, you know, as a matter of course.
This brings us, we need a policy of some kind. I mean, that there are minutia levels of unimportant access. That's not what I mean, obviously, but there has to be some reasonable policy of how we would inform the board of that access. Were you going to say something, Andrel?
I was just going to.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't hear myself. Tackle Phil's comments, what we do is we work closely together-
To tackle Phil's comments, what we do is we work closely together, and we will let the board know about anything that we feel is urgent enough to talk with the board about. But to your point, you know, a clear policy does need to be prepared, and that is something that will be prepared very soon.
Thanks, Andrel. I think that Murray's question is a very timely one. Why don't we do this? Phil, you and Andrel worked to develop a report that will come to the board. It's either a quarterly or a semi-annual report, I'm not sure of the timeline, where you provide the board with information on where we've had substantive issues occur, and we have to define what that means. We don't want to see 1,000 things, but we want to see things that make a difference. I think that's what Mark is asking, all right?
It's not a problem.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So let's proceed, that concludes all of our reports. Let's proceed with the public comments segment. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. this morning. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that we have no registered speakers.
Our board members, if there are no more other questions or comments, saying none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.